So, my name's Aaron Smith and I'm the UK Dyslexia and S D N D consultant for Microsoft. I don't need to wear these then. And my role is to spread more awareness about what Microsoft's doing. I am also, as Tom said, I'm the Chair of the Leicester Dyslexia Association. I'm going to talk a bit about that in a second. So, I want to just talk a bit about Microsoft first, so you've got a feeling of where I come from, and what we're doing, and why I'm here. So, at Microsoft, about four years ago, we had a new CEO called Saturn Nadella. And Saturn is all about the change in culture at Microsoft. He's been with Microsoft for 25 years. And he set this mission I have on the screen there, which is at Microsoft, our mission is to empower every person on the planet, in every organisation on the planet, to achieve more. And it's quite a bold statement from such a large company. And that is the same thing when it comes to accessibility. It's the same concept. Saturn actually has a son who's got cerebral palsy and a daughter with severe learning difficulties. So, he's very passionate about accessibility and about change. And that comes the same when it comes to dyslexia as well. Now, in Microsoft, we have a few people. This person here is called Jenny Leigh Flurry. And Jenny is our Chief Accessibility Officer. Her role is to set policy internal and external. She's deaf. She's a very funny character. She often talks to this guy, who's Hector Mento, who's the UK's Accessibility Evangelist, and goes, "I'm deaf, don't talk to me." And walks away from him, "I can't hear you, I'm deaf." She's very funny with him. Hector is all about working here in the UK and supporting the UK kind of policy. And this is a guy called Mike Tholson. And Mike Tholson is basically the guy that actually engineered everything that I'm going to show you today. So, it's his fault that we have all these accessibility features built into Microsoft Office and Windows 10. This guy, I have no idea who he is. But, and I have to forget to not talk about myself in a third person now. So, as Tom said, my name's Aaron Smith. And the big thing about me is that I'm severely dyslexic. So, as we had them statistics about the 10% of the population, that's 6.3 million people in the UK. 6.2, yeah, isn't it 6.3 now? 6.3 million people in the UK have some severity dyslexia. I class myself as a severely dyslexic adult, so I'm one of that 4%. I'm 34 years old, I have a reading age of a nine-year-old, a spelling age of an eight-year-old. I have no automatic reading capability. And what that means in the terms that makes it easier is that when I see words, I see just letters and symbols, I don't see words. I can read, I can read pretty well now, mainly because I read a lot of Twitter. But, most of the time is that my reading concept is just like, let's either find someone else to read it or use technology. I've worked in the field of dyslexia for over 15 years, either in a paid role or a voluntary role. And I love technology. There's no problem, no issue that I'm wearing an Apple Watch and wearing a Microsoft t-shirt, that's not a problem. Saturn has an iPhone, it's no problem at all. It's all about what we do with the technology, and I do love technology. I got diagnosed of being dyslexic when I was aged nine. And my analogy is that, actually, the day my mum told me, "Aaron, you're dyslexic", I was like, "This is brilliant, I've got this brilliant label, what does it mean?" The same week, the dentist said, "You've got to have eight teeth taken out." I went, "Brilliant, I've got eight teeth to be taken out." How many people are excited about having the teeth taken out? Well, I'm not anymore, I don't like the dentist. And kind of like, probably for about four or five years, that's how dyslexia kind of felt for me. That stress, that anxiety, that thing that, "Why am I being picked on in school? Why can't I read very well? Why can't I, why do I get laughed at when I know what one times one is?" And that was like, that's how it was. And things kind of like, I wasn't happy, it was not a nice time, it was. I have a scar on my thumb, it was when I punched the glass door. I think my door, in my mum and dad's house, my bedroom door, I made the decision to actually get a wooden door and chop it in half. So, if ever I kicked it down again, because I kicked it down twice, I did, I broke the kind of door. So, I bought myself a door. And basically, if ever I kicked it down again, it smacked me in the face, so I wouldn't kick it down again. That's why I did it. But, I did get a statement, and that was, it was three weeks after my SATs, but I did do, I did get support. And when I went to my high school, I was like, I got this TA and I got this support work. And what, and actually, the lady that was kind of like my support caseworker said to my parents, "Aaron, you never amount to anything, Aaron will never amount to anything because he can't read." And I think my mum said, "Well, we'll show this person." And I think now that I could say that I have shown that person. When I moved to my upper school, and this was probably the best time of my life, I did my GCSEs, Zasenko there said to me, "You're the most severely dyslexic person, we're going to support you." And she did put a TA next to me every day. Now, to me, that now, that was brilliant then. And like, yes, in biology, I could talk to the teacher and get involved in the lesson, and I didn't have to worry about writing notes down. But in history, the TA just was there, "Aaron, wake up, Aaron, wake up", because I kept falling asleep. And so, I don't know if it was inclusive. I think now that technology is so much more advanced, and some of the stuff I'm going to show you is going to show you that actually, we can use technology to its full advantage. So, even though that I still have dyslexia today, I still find it very difficult today. I have succeeded in life. As Tom said, I'm an independent consultant. So, I own two companies, one called the S D N D Group, one called the L B A Group. I work for a number of large international companies, including Microsoft, and a company called Scanning Pens, and a few others. I'm an international speaker, I love this bit, because I got to spend, I went to India last year and actually spoke at the Maharishi Dyslexia Association on the comparison between the UK and the Indian, and the Indian concept of dyslexia. It takes two and a half years to get a diagnosis of dyslexia in India. It's a medical condition over there, there is no concept of educational psychologists. It was really fascinating, the seven days I spent out there. I'm a specialist consultant to St David's College. So, St David's College is a mainstream independent school based in North Wales. And the school has 50 years' experience of working with dyslexic children. It has over, 60% of its intake have an additional learning need. And I'm their AT consultant, so I manage all their assisted technology and digital transformation project. Now, these two people changed my life. There's no picture there, because mum told me to take it out. She also, I also said, "Can I have a pitch to put in there when you go on holiday?" She went on holiday and she went to Spain. And I said, "Get a picture of you and dad together." No, there's a picture of her with a pint of beer and a picture of dad with a pint of beer. Can't put that on my presentation. So, mum and dad changed my life. And what they did was, is they found the Leicester Dyslexia Association. And this was kind of my starting point to the world of dyslexia. It's really weird actually talking about it here in Leicester, because I talk about it all the while, and it's like, it's a little bit emotional really, because I'm here, and it is. So, the Dyslexia Association did change my life. I was a student there, I was able to go back and help. I was taught by many people, including our coordinator Fiona. And it was an amazing time. And I actually became Vice Chairman. And I'm chairman now, because the previous chair wanted to, he said 16 years is enough. But he did used to take me to lots of events. And actually, in 2006, I got my BDA Young Achievers Award. And that was basically a really good positive thing to me. And that meant, now you know what, dyslexia isn't a negative thing, it's got to be a positive thing. And that's how I look at it now. And I was able to work for the British Dyslexia Association, and that's kind of changed my life as well. And I was able to actually grow to be a person with an actual salary to live. I could buy a house, I could buy a new car, I can actually, I can actually do things. And that, and even though that I am dyslexic, just hold me back. Because actually, my positivity of dyslexia makes me go any further. This is the picture I use about dyslexia. So, this picture sums up dyslexia. For me, it does anyway, because it's a person holding a pen. Now, I use picture for girl, because of that some people, I've been into many schools and say, "It's just boys that are dyslexic." And I went, "No, they're not really much different. Girls are just very good at hiding it sometimes, not all the time, but sometimes." I did a summer school for the BDA, and actually, we had 60% of girls to boys. We only had 10 people, so we had like, seven girls to three, no, four boys. Well, I can't do the math, anyway, you'll work it out. But, so this picture sums it up really well. And I think that I'm really passionate about technology. And I use a lot of assisted technology, not just the stuff I'm going to show you today about Microsoft. Because this stuff is all built in, it's kind of like technology at your fingertips. But for me, without technology, I wouldn't be able to do what I do today. But actually, for me also, is that if we are going to put technology in school, we have to think about putting the right technology. It's not just about, okay, let's put, let's put text help into a primary school and not tell anyone that they can make the bar simpler. Or, let's put Claro into a school with people that are, that have visual difficulties. That's not the right thing. You've got to think about what you're using the right text form. Because dyslexia is not just about reading or spelling or writing, it's often about memory, it's often about that phonological awareness, the difference of the way that we think. But of course, dyslexia has other positives, that concept of thinking outside the box, the creativity side, the natural thinkers. I've got an office in the bottom of my garden, well, I've just built it, or it's just been built. Now, I couldn't do the spatial awareness bit of how big it was going to be, I had to like, I couldn't pace it out. But what I could do is, is I knew exactly where the network cable was going to go and where the power socket's going to go. I can see that perfectly fine, but how big it was, I can work it out. And that's why I've now saying my sofa's too small, but that's another story. So, my journey with Microsoft started back in 2016. I was still working for the BDA at the time, and my role in the BDA was to get money out of them. So, I went to Microsoft, because if you don't, actually don't get. And basically, this guy said, "Come and see this." So, I saw Mike Tholson, the picture I showed you earlier, and he's showing me this thing called Learning Tools. And Learning Tools was just this amazing concept, it's built into OneNote, and it basically did a few features, which I'm going to demo in a sec. And then I kind of like, watched this concept. So, then Hector came on board as the Accessibility Evangelist. And then I saw that we're going to add more and more supports, more being built in, it is. And then I read Hit Refresh. Now, Hit Refresh uses Saturn Nadella's book. And this book is all about the five years that Saturn Nadella's done at Microsoft. And his role has been, is just, has really changed the company. And yeah, and if you're sad like me, he mentions dyslexia like seven times in the book. So, I was quite passionate about that and how he's changed things. And what happened is this, is that Microsoft say that there's a billion people in the world with a disability. And we add that extra bit to our mission. So, at Microsoft, our mission is to empower every person on the planet to achieve more. With more than 1 billion people in the world with a disability, there is no limit to what people can achieve when technology reflects the device, the device of the ways that, who use it, I've read that a bit wrong, but the concept's there. But that statement is so positive. I use technology every day. Can I ask a question? How many of you today used a sat nav? Yeah, quite a lot of you, yeah? That's an assistive piece of technology, it's helping you do something, it means you don't have to, you can't, it's changing your life. How many have used a cash machine? Yeah, okay. What I want you to do is, next time you use a cash machine, go and look and find the jack socket. There is a jack socket, most Barclays cash machines have a jack socket on. Because if you plug a pair of headphones in, it's got text to speech in it for someone that's blind. That's an accessibility thing, it is, that concept is there. There's all these changes happening, and it's all about trying to make them more mainstream. Because for me, if we make technology more mainstream, like Microsoft are doing, for those people that really need it, we'll get it. So, Microsoft is looking at all these areas. We're looking at visual, hearing, cognitive is what we're going to talk about today, speech, mobility and neuro. And I'll just touch on mobility very quickly and tell you a little story. So, Microsoft create the Xbox, correct? The Xbox has got the world's first accessibility game controller. What this means is you can use the Xbox now if you have a physical disability. So, it's got big buttons on, you can plug switches in it, you can plug joysticks into it, so a really clever bit of kit. But Microsoft went one step further. If you think you've lost a limb, or you've got only one finger and you can't open a box, what does technology come in? Comes in cellophane, comes in a box with sellotape all over it. What they did was, they put ring pulls. So, literally with a hook, you can just pull the ring pull and open the box. It's thinking outside the box. So, to me, that was a very positive story. But we want to talk about Learning Tools. So, Learning Tools is the concept of what Microsoft are doing to actually set that level playing field. We want to change the way we do things. Now, Learning Tools came about from the Hackathon in 2015. And this is basically where people came to me and thought, "You know what? If we change the spacing of text, we might make it a bit easier. If we put text to speech into stuff, we might make it a bit easier. If we put synchronized highlighting, we might make things a bit easier. Or what about finding the nouns or the verbs? And you'll see why I said that." They put it together, they hacked it into OneNote. And basically then, what happened was, is they, it gets advertised, it gets put out to our, to the staff team. The staff team vote on it. And then what happens is, is then they have another week, they win that, and they did, they have another week, and basically then, the senior management team put funding behind it. And that's why we have all these features. Now, what we have got is, I haven't read this yet, but this book came out only about two weeks ago. This is called The Ability Hack. And this book here actually explains the whole journey of that two-second conversation I've just said. So, this book here explains why we did it, how we did it, and what it is. So, this is written by Jenny Leigh Flurry, who's the Chief Accessibility Officer. It's about £16 on Amazon. I found it the other day, it is, and I've forgotten which glass was mine, but that's fine. We'll work on that, it's there. So, anyone heard of OneNote? Who's heard of OneNote? Put your hand up, good, okay. Can I just ask something now? I've just forgot to ask this question again. How many of you are teachers in the room? That's good, a few numbers, okay, that's good. How many are parents or related to some kind of parenting concept? And how many dyslexics are in the room if you want to say you're dyslexic? Hey, look at that, I like that, that's good, that's excellent, okay. So, OneNote is a brilliant thing. This is my iPad, this doesn't go, this doesn't leave me, this goes to bed with me really. But we'll talk about that in a sec. So, what OneNote is, your digital workbook. Anyone, so you know what a ring binder looks like? You know that concept of having the dividers and the pages and your content? That's what OneNote is, it's your digital ring binder. It's cloud-based, it is, it's organized yourself. If you're in school, it actually becomes your workbook. In schools, it can save a lot of money on exercise books, because it becomes that place. It organizes students as well. It's a collaboration tool, means people can work together. It also means that no matter what device you have, you always have your notes. So, for me, let's think of this concept. I talked about history earlier. History, I went through six exercise books, because I kept losing it. I'm not going to lose my iPad. I want to show you this video, and I'm hoping this video works.
The true purpose of education is to create possibility.
It was a little hard for me, people laugh whenever I read sometimes.
Well, they knew how to read, and I didn't.
I will never be good at reading, I will probably be ill back again.
It highlights the words to know where I am.
When it's reading, I see spaces between the words.
And it's easy to focus on.
The first time I actually could read that book, I was proud of myself.
I was very proud of myself.
Good job, Julie.
When technology and education come together, possibility becomes reality.
I want to read every book in here.
So, this was when Microsoft launched Learning Tools. That was the video they created. And what Learning Tools is, it has this amazing tool called Immersive Reader, which has text to speech, synchronized highlighting, visual stress age, literacy aids and dictation. It also has some other amazing features I'm going to show you that I haven't listed there. Now, first thing we have, because we have a majority of you are parents in the room, Microsoft Office comes in lots of flavours, so you can have it, you can either have it online, you can have it on a Windows 10 app, you can have it as a desktop app. And we are purely talking now about the Windows 10 application. So, if you went out tomorrow to any retailer and bought a Windows 10 device, you will have OneNote Windows 10 app, which is this dark purple one that I have on my screen here. And basically, this version here is the one we're going to use today. You would log in, you'd click on it, and it would come up like this. So, if you think about what I said about that ring binder concept. So, you can see at the side there, I've got like my Quick Note, Fox, Contacts, Demo and so forth. There are my ring binders, sorry, there are my dividers. And then I've got my content like Demo, Aaron's stuff, Study of Earth, Untitled page. And then the Demo page there is my content. So, this content here is all about geography. And it's a piece of geography homework that I can't do, because I can't read that very well. There's a lot of text there to read. So, I'm going to click on the View tab here, and I'm going to click on this button here, it says Immersive Reader. Now, what's going to happen is, it's going to take me out of my editing view and into my immersive view, because immersive means taking you out into a view that is there. And straight away, you can see that the text has changed. So, you can see there that we have got a bit of spacing. We've got a bit more, probably a bit of spacing, and we can do a few things. We can click on this A, and we can, we can turn the spacing off, or we can put it back on. We can make the size a bit bigger or a bit smaller, let's make it about that size. I've got two fonts, three fonts to change. Century Gothic, sorry, Comic Sans, I've headed myself. Why is Comic Sans a dyslexia-friendly font? Who can tell me why? Yeah? So, you know what, you're going to be my favourite person. Because I've been to like 12 presentations, and everyone talks about the A, but no one talks about the G. To me, the G looks like an eight, and everything else, look at the G on Geography, it looks like an eight. So, Comic Sans is really good for primary. If you want to write down another font, Century Gothic. Century Gothic is the best, is a really good font to use. It has the same G and A as Comic Sans, it's a really good font to use. We'll leave it in Comic Sans, because what I can also do is, I can do some other things. So, if we think of Ehrlich's Syndrome or visual stress, we can change the background colour of my text to make it easier to read, so let's put it in a nice purple colour. I can now do some other features. So, one of the features that we know is really good for dyslexics to help people learn to read is syllable division. So, I can now split my words up, so they've got geography, landforms, all so. I can also pick out the nouns, the verbs, the adverbs, the adjectives. I did that the wrong way around, but that's logical. And basically, if we've got colour sensitivity, we can put the labels on. So, we now know that's Ns and Nvs and ADGs and ADVs. But let's just say, I'm just going to take all these off and just leave the nouns on. Let's say for the teachers in the room, that you, you may be in primary, you talk about nouns, and they're not purple, they're blue, your judgment's blue, which is quite a cool feature now. Let's just turn these off. I've also got some other things I can do, and I can focus in on lines a bit more, so I can do like half a line or a single line when I'm reading it, or a few, or a bigger paragraph. But I've got there, as you can see, I've got Turn On Pitch Dictionary. So, if I click on the word Earth, there's the picture. If I click on, sorry, where's Call? Call's my favourite one. Call has four pictures there. So, for communication and concept, it's all there. But the biggest thing about this is this.
The study of Earth's landforms is called physical geography. Landforms can be mountains and valleys.
That's synchronized highlighting with text to speech. That is free, that's the big thing. We can do some other things with this, we can make it faster. Or, my mum's not in the audience, I can say, as my mum says, "Make it slower, slower."
Called physical features.
That's just too slow, that is. So, there is actually, you know how, everyone laughs, I don't know which talk I do, everyone laughs when it goes really fast. There is a video on the Microsoft website of a visually impaired guide that has it twice that speed. Now, I can understand quite fast, I can understand it that fast. But actually, some people find, some people find it difficult. But that there just shows that actually, if you went and bought a Windows 10 device, we've just changed someone's life, we've made something accessible, we've made an independent learner out of someone just by copying and pasting stuff into OneNote. It doesn't work on everything, so it may be a bit of a buying, copying and pasting from every webpage and so forth, but it's a starting point, that's what the point is, it's technology at your fingertips. And that's really important. So, let's just have a look at this. I'm going to show you this next video of how it can be used and how it's been found to be used really well.
I'm Jenny Anderson Johnson.
I'm Ben Johnson.
We have three kids, Alden, Gavin and Carrick.
My name is Carrick and I'm in second grade. My favourite things in the world is bees, snakes, gardening.
We definitely knew there was a problem, because you know, he just was not being able to read with us as much as the other kids were.
Sometimes I was embarrassed because I didn't know how to read.
He had dyslexia. Initially, it was that kind of feeling of shame that really made me feel sad.
My teacher was like, "Who wants to read first?" For the whole entire year, I said, "Not me."
So, you start wondering, you know, what were you doing wrong? And then there's a little bit of panic that sets in.
One day when we were learning, my friend came next to me and said, "I know how you can do this, just click on that button and it said immersive reader", and I clicked on it. And I was just focused, my eyes were focused into it. I can say it to you, and that, and I get, or I could tell you a picture.
The awesome thing about immersive reader, it was just there, it was just an icon click away.
I think that it's allowed him to have more confidence that he can do more.
It makes me feel good and my life is more easier.
The first night, he kind of came up to us with a book in hand and wanting to read to us. You know, they see that twinkle in his eye.
Yeah.
It was something he had conquered, you know.
It goes on and talks about how he made a Mother's Day card as well. But you can watch that whole video if you want to. So, that just shows that actually, that's changed someone's life, in school, out of school. It's made someone feel that they can read. We're actually doing some research with the British Dyslexia Association, and a school in Leicester, and a school in North Wales, to actually see if there's a real, the real, the real concept around, if it does actually help with attainment for reading and for spelling. So, we'll find that result out in January. So, I want to just talk now about Microsoft Word, because it's a product that everyone uses. And I want to show you some of the features in here that I really like. So, Microsoft Word has got accessibility features built in. So, this is the desktop version. So, Word has got this thing called Accessibility Checker, that actually checks to make sure that you've put titles into things, make sure that you've put full stops in. It makes sure that actually, that when you actually send a document, even like a PowerPoint, that actually you've put your alt text in. So, alt text means that you can, that you've got in a picture what that picture is, so someone using a screen reader can actually read that picture. It also has built-in text to speech, which is called Read Aloud. We have Spell Check Read Aloud, which is my favourite feature. Syllable division, colour changes on pages, column width, and then of course, the big thing is dictation. So, this is my co-authoring view, that in Microsoft Word, we can work together. So, let me say that me and this gentleman at the front row, we were co-authoring. And I can't remember if you did put your hand up being dyslexic, so I don't think you did, I know you two did. But let's say that you weren't. You could be in a normal view, but I would be in that bottom view, because that's the view that I like, which has got like a spacing of words, sort of different colour background. But actually then, we could be doing it with Alison, who may say, actually, I like the black on white view with the spacing. So, the three of us could be co-authoring, but you wouldn't know that we're in that view. So, that actually now takes away that, a bit of that problem that people have. Most people will be aware that you've seen that spell check on the left there with the four options. We've now changed, so there's only three options. And we've got this new feature there, that when you click on it, it says Read Aloud. Let me demo this for you now. So, I've got my Microsoft Word document open here, this is my Word document. And you can see here, actually, I'm just going to make this a bit bigger so you can see it, because it's quite small. So, we're going to look at this word here. Now, this word here is one of them words that we just can't spell because of the F sound. So, I've put F for physical, and it's gone with a red line. Now, when I was at school, I was told, "Use the biggest word or the word at the top." I can't read them words, there's like four of them, I don't know what they say. I'll just guess and have like my big, all my big long words in my document. Press the right mouse button, and here comes my list. So, this is my list of my three things, let's do the bottom one.
Phinical, no reference information.
So, it tells me that there's no references in that one, but it's not phinical, it's the word I'm looking for.
Fiscal, similar to, economic, financial, monetary.
So, it's not fiscal, because it's basically giving me, it's to do with financial and economic. I know what financial means, but let's try this one.
Physical, similar to, bodily, substantial, brute.
I have no idea what brute means, but it's definitely the word I want. So, you can see there that real change. Now, as you might be able to see on my ribbon across the top there, in the bottom, in the top corner there, is this button that says dictation. I'm now using dictation, and it's working better, because it's now picked on my headset, full stop. New paragraph. New paragraph. I can use dictation for spelling words like Mississippi or Constantinople. It said call rather than or, so small errors. But you can see there that it could be very useful. It's not as accurate as some products, but it's still pretty there. And that's just built in. It's built into the operating system, it's built into Word. That could change someone's life. And then what I can do now is, if I go into the Review tab, Review, here's my Read Aloud button, so I can click there.
I can use dictation for spelling words like Mississippi, call, Constantinople, call rather than, or so, small hours, but...
Yeah, that got it quite wrong really, from what I was saying, but hey-ho. You can get the concept, hopefully. But then you can also see there that actually I use Read Aloud and text to speech. So, you've got Read Aloud, which is text to speech with synchronized highlighting, so I know where I am. Now, if I go into the View tab, this is where my Learning Tools button is. So, this would then take me into my co-authoring view. Now, you can see straight away that the things have changed. Now, I don't know if you can notice that, so if you look at the word working, has got syllable division turned on, that's what's turned on the top there. So, if I press Enter and now I'm typing this word, so B E C A U, did you see it? Automatically turn that word into a syllable division, it automatically broke the word up. We know how important breaking words are when it comes to teaching one-to-one with dyslexics. So I just think this is an amazing feature. So like I said, I can change the background color to this lighter version. More colors will come, this is still quite new. If you think that I first saw this in 2016, where we are today, it's amazing to where we can go. And this is all part of Office 365. So I want to talk about this then. So, I don't know if you can see that very well, but I will, I'll try and go through it as best we can. I have got a, a document that you can read with this on. So basically what it says here, that Read Aloud, which is that Read Aloud function is in OneNote Desktop, OneNote Online, OneNote Windows 10 App, OneNote for iPad, OneNote on, sorry, Word Online, Word Desktop, which is the version I just showed you, Word for Mac, Word for iPad is coming. Uh, where Outlook Web Access, that is that if you're checking your emails online and also Outlook Desktop, so that's emails. It's also in an app called Office Lens and also in the Edge browser. So what it means is that if you update your Windows 10 device and open up Edge, which is Microsoft Edge, you will be able to look in a PDF and in EPUBs, you'll be able to do syllables and parts of speech. So you'll be able to find the nouns and the adjectives and you'll be able to do syllable division on, on, on a web browser. Dictation is available there at the bottom, it says OneNote Desktop, OneNote Online, which I showed, which I, which I was talking about. OneNote Windows 10, Word Online, Word Desktop is the one I showed you. And it says that Outlook Desktop, now that's very important. If we think about schools, organizations or, or parents, emailing is a, is a, is a, is a way of life. We always email. We now have a capability now to actually make our students have productivity with text inside, uh, within Word and with other products. But also we can now help our teachers and our parents because we can now do emails through, through dictation and we can double check our work by Read Aloud. That's the link there where you can download. All right, I'm going to show you one more feature that I really think is cool. So this is a garage project, so this means it's not actually inbuilt yet into, into Office, but it is going to be. So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to end my presentation and I'm going to press this button here that says Start Subtitles. Hopefully through my presentation, it has subtitles working. So I could talk through my presentation with subtitles. So let's just talk about one thing for people with dyslexia, how is this useful? The first thing is, let's think at the end of the lesson, we can load up our subtitles and say, the homework for today is, read chapters one to two of the New Testament. That's the first thing that came to my mind. You don't, I don't know if you want to, but that's just my, first thing that came to my mind. You could mute your microphone. But then what you can also do though, if you would think we were using OneNote, we can go into this little dots and click there where it says Save Subtitles. So I could save my subtitles as a Word document. Uh, and basically what I can do is then upload them into OneNote and we can use Read Aloud. Or we could put them into a diary entry or put them into an email, that's a really useful way of doing it. I'm going to ask now, can anyone read another language? Someone who wants to? Yeah, what language can you read? German, right, brilliant. You can try this if you want to, there's an app called Translator that's on there. Uh, I'm just trying to find the app and I'm going to take the picture. So what you can do is this, you can take the picture, yes, allow, join that. Uh, and we're going to go with German. Now I'm just going to walk away from my, this. So hopefully now my headphones are still working. Hello, my name is Aaron and it is now converting to German, is that right? And is it pretty good?
Better than Google Translate.
I'm not, I'm not making any comment, it's being videoed. But anyway, that concept there is basically means that if you think about now